Thank you. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes and looks like there are no minutes to approve. There's nothing here and there's nothing here.
Yeah, they're in there. I have them here.
Okay, on mine, there's not. Okay. Where do you want me to hit it at? Right. Yeah, but it's not telling me that the dates. Can you tell me? I'm sorry, but it's not on my computer and it's not on my.
Yeah, it's the July 9th, July 9, 2000.
Is it business?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's just it's not on there. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 9th, 2024 business meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
The board met at 5:30 for budget workshop. We had Tim Knoll from our Public Works Department in tonight. It was open to the public. After that, for a half an hour, we met in executive session with information from the manager and we will be meeting after the meeting tonight for information from the manager. Okay, we'll go on to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak under public comment? All I ask is that we can have your name and your address, please.
John Packer, 5723 Kenwood Avenue. Can we maybe ask that there be a suspension of the regular order of business? And have a possible manager's report and report from the board in regards to the, you know, the sewer work and everything going on. Maybe it'll expedite things a little bit and some questions will get answered versus having a big back and forth as occurred last meeting.
Okay, well, what we can do under comment, Mr. Gutcher is prepared to give that report from the meeting with Dolee last Wednesday.
Okay.
So we can do that under public comment. Okay, Mr. Gutcher?
Yeah, sure. Great idea. Yeah, so as briefed last public meeting, I did have a chance to attend a briefing update, which was attended by, of course, a number of township staff and engineers from both GHD and HRG, our Storm and Sewer Authority, engineers, as well as a number of Dolee representatives to include their ownership. And it was, the resolution of the meeting was fairly positive. They gave a basically a good update as to where the project stands today and a good kind of overview of the history of the project and kind of briefing on, you know, some of the things that we should take a look at for next contract and especially as we head into, you know, particular project areas that are similar to BC7. So that was a good overview for myself to hear as well as, I think, township engineer and staff. As it relates to the BC7 project specifically, Dolee is on track and as I was made aware, they were onsite today and yesterday, really getting into the project with regard to rapidly completing some of the lasting improvements that have to be done, including curb ramps, concrete work, some remaining pipe work and some yard work as well. The intent here really is to have all of those portions of the project as just outlined completed by the beginning of December, no later than December 1st, and also have base pave complete before December 1st. And December 1st is hopefully, you know, the kind of worst case, particularly for the items such as curb ramp and concrete. And then Dolee would return sometime before spring of 2025 to complete the final wearing course. So substantial completion by December 1st. Site in good repair, good order, good public safety order by December 1st. Base pave by December 1st and then final wearing course, as I had mentioned, heading into 2025. And then again, the only reason they can't return to do the final wearing course before then is of course, by that time, the asphalt plants will not be in a position to provide us the necessary material. So that kind of brings the project up to speed. Again, Dolee assures us that that timeline is appropriate and able to be maintained. We're going to continue to have regular contact with them to ensure that that is actually the case. And, you know, I feel confident that that will progress nicely.
Does that answer your question?
Somewhat.
Okay.
So has an extension actually been officially accepted or?
The contract executed.
Yeah, the contractor does have before them the extension at this point. They have not signed it simply because they are attempting to, I'll say redline the document to include the caveat of the final wearing course.
So it's their document, though. You sent it back to them for correction. Because according to the contract, which, you know, by the right to know, I got and read through a substantial part of it, it's their, the onus is on them to give you a reason why.
Yep.
You know, they're asking for an extension. So they're rewriting their own request. Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, because we are, the township is asking them to rewrite it to include, because initially, they had requested a, an extension that went beyond December. They were asking for 160 days. And we were able to negotiate back down to them a December timeframe. And so now as part of that, their one last negotiation, if you will, by the contractor, Dolee, to reflect the fact that, yeah, base pave would be a reasonable milestone, but that final wearing course, they're just not going to be able to get it done before December 1st. So that's why they have to tweak.
And their cause for is the utility work? Is that correct?
Yeah, utility work earlier on, there were, there was some weather-related delays earlier on. And as I had mentioned, and you're no doubt getting sick of hearing, you know, the way they're, and I, again, I fully understand and appreciate the fact that residents in that area really could care less about this point that I'm going to make, but as it relates to the way the project progresses, particularly with our contracts with Dolee, those early delays and these continued delays on the utility side, the way they
Can I, can I just?
Schedule out there.
Can I interject for a second?
You know what, Mr. Packer, can you turn on your mic?
I believe it's on. Maybe I wasn't close enough.
Oh, okay, just talk into it. Okay.
So again, in reading through one of the addendums, number five, under G, utility and infrastructure, the utility infrastructure and utility adjustments interfering with contract operations. Before submitting a bid for the project, the contractor shall examine the project site to determine the location of all utility infrastructure. So that it's, and that's just a sentence or two in that section. It's quite extensive, but, you know, in that alone, you would, you know, you're telling them before they even put a bid in, they should have been determining where these issues were going to be. And that was January of 2022. So again, you know, I don't want to sit here and get in the weeds with everything. There's just, you know, a lot of things going on. And like you said, yeah, I'm tired of hearing about the contract because there's plenty in this contract that I feel that the township, you know, should be exercising to ensure that we're getting the work product that we're supposed to. And as those behind me are probably going to get up and say too, it hasn't been that way. And then I'm just going to ask one more question and then I'll let anybody else speak that wants to. So again, section or article 10.03 is a project representative and it states that the owner and engineer will name such a person. Can you tell me who that person is?
I can't. Yeah, I'm not sure who on paper the project representative is, but.
Again, you're not instilling any confidence in me because it simply says that the owner and engineer will appoint a resident project representative to represent the owners and engineer at the site and assist the owner and engineer in observing the progress and quality of the work. And you can't tell me who that is?
Sir, no, I cannot tell you. The 700-page contract, sir, what the project engineer representative is on paper.
It's a person. It's somebody that was supposed to have been named that should, that we should know who they are, that they should be out there ensuring that everything's getting done.
That's being done, sir. That is being done. But to ask me to pick out a line on a 700-page document
I'm asking you for a name.
And say what that answer is.
Brad, the question is, so somebody was appointed, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is it Eric Morgan?
You just can't name him right now.
Again, board, on paper, I'm not sure
Right.
Who the?
But somebody, somebody fulfills that role.
Absolutely.
You just can't name him. It's your boots on the ground and you don't know who it is. That's the guy you should be going to on almost a daily or weekly basis to stay what's going on out there and you don't know who it is.
No, I don't.
And I, and I find that absolutely ridiculous.
Okay, well, I appreciate your feedback on my performance.
I think it's Mr. Morgan.
It could be.
Because he's the one that was out there when I was there last Friday, when I was out in May.
I get that, but
Yeah.
In his emails and everything, that's not how he's represented. So I don't, I don't know who it is. So again, if we have an issue, you know, we've been coming through you, through, you know, because again, it appears to me it should be, you know, and it says, a resident representative.
That, sir, that does not mean, that does not mean resident.
I didn't say it had to be a resident, but for us, then it's a misnomer as how it's titled.
It, the indication means that it shall be a resident as it relates to somebody who is going to be the the dedicated appointed person throughout the duration of that, that contract.
Yeah, I'm not saying it has to be one of us. I'm saying it's somebody that should be representing the residents. At least that's how it reads.
Can we find that out so that we know?
Sure.
Okay, all right. We'll find that out and then we'll be in touch. Okay. Is there anybody else? Name and address, please.
Name's Stephen Blaine. I live at 5732 Kenwood. In regards to what Mr. Packer's saying, we understand we're to the point, we just want to get the job done. And I think you're here at this point to, let's just get the job done. But there's been a lot to go on here, you know, we're giving them an extension and we haven't held them accountable for any way. I mean, you said the final pavement. There's a lot of places in that community that the final pavement could be done this fall. Like up in Palmer, there's no utility issues. And their lack of work has been just horrible. And that's what, you know, we're so upset about. And it seems like we're just okay. We'll just give them two more months to get it done. And where the rest of the neighbors, we watch them work. There's been a lot more work since we were here last week and we appreciate it. So somebody must have got some phone calls going and we appreciate that, especially you, Mrs. Lindsay. But with that said, there's a lot, we were just giving them a blanket extension and there's a lot more work should have been done and we should be holding them accountable for not getting the work done where it's at. We understand there's some utility issues, but a lot of this could have been completed. And going forward, the next contract, I hope you have a better handle of the contract and everybody has a better handle of the contract because there's a lot in that contract. And it's your job, sir, to make sure you read that and know the ins and outs. Thank you.
Brad, can I ask you a question? So I was out there today. So up on Palmer and them, everything's done. They're finishing up the curbs and stuff. Are they going to pave, they're going to do the base. Are they going to do any of the top coat in those areas that can be done? Or none at all in that whole area till spring?
No, their attempt is going to be to do what they can in terms of, just to that point. If there's an area where they can complete all of the work, they're going to do that. They are going to do that, but it's likely they're not going to be able to complete the entire.
Right, but if there's areas that they can do the base coat plus the top coat.
Yes.
Because like you said, up there in Palmer, Raybuck, they're almost done up there.
Yeah, and again, I, as, the way the asphalt ordering is done and mobilization, you might see a, and again, Palmer, I'm not sure how long a stretch, the completed stretch is at this point, but there may be a, an area where a resident may see that and say, oh, everything is done here. Why isn't it paved? Again, the way they order the asphalt and mobilize that material might not permit for that small an area to be done. But as soon as they have an area that makes it feasible for that material to be ordered and delivered, they will do those areas that they can ahead of even 2025.
Okay, well, hopefully we have someone that's out there every day and is on them, you know, since your meeting, since your meeting last week.
Yes.
And Robin, who would that be?
Well, Eric Morgan.
Yeah, again, I say Eric Morgan. If Eric Morgan's on vacation, you know, then I'm telling you falsehood. The township and our engineers have representatives on the field constantly and we are in constant contact with Dolee representatives to ensure that this project progresses as per the resolved negotiation.
Okay, well, hopefully it goes from here forward. So, yes, sir. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Can you just?
Yeah, I can wait.
So how much more time, Brad, are we going to give Dolee before we require them to sign the contract?
Yeah, ma'am, that's a good question. I, I mean, it's in their hands now. I hope to have it on the board agenda by your October 1st meeting. So I anticipate it will be on your October 1st meeting to approve. But as I explained, it's fairly well done. It's just a matter of Dolee getting the red line back to us to include the 2025 wearing course kind of caveat, but.
Okay, we'll keep us updated on that so we know. Okay. Yes, sir.
Frank Smith, 5730 Kenwood Avenue. Yeah, ever since we, a couple of weeks ago, we came to the Sewer Authority meeting, things have progressed exponentially. We appreciate that. Just in our side, we were talking, it's sad that we had to get to that level and bring 15, 20 people to the meeting. As far as the contact that John was, Mr. Packer was referring to, the only reason we know about Eric Morgan is because I grabbed him one day and was just had a question of curiosity because everything started, you know, just with the project and everything. And then the last time after that meeting, the next morning, he's at my house addressing my concerns, all our concerns with the yards and the sidewalks and the safety issues. So that's where we got that name from. And he told me to directly email him. He's like, almost like, well, you don't need to go to the board meeting. Just call me if there's an issue or email me. So for you, he's been phenomenal, like he's been right there. But at the same time, he's also like, well, I'm not the official guy for that. Does that make any sense? So that's kind of what we're like with the contract, which, and no offense, you should know every page in a contract, especially the highlights. If that's, it's a big thing, right? It's a scope, right? Even like SOP is, okay, I got this guy for this. Like every contract should, I have a guy on the ground for this. I have a guy on the ground for that. That's just our opinion. We've all come around businesses and have dealt with contracts ourselves. And I get it, it is a very large document, right? But to even have somebody proofread it for you, an intern, and give you the highlights or whatever, that was, should be, you know, and we're not trying to insult intelligence or effort or anything. It's just, it's kind of like John said, to kind of lose confidence in what you're doing if you can't even tell us that whoever that is from your department to represent us. And that probably would have saved you a lot of headaches from us being here because we'd had somebody to talk to, boots on the ground. That being said, piggybacking what this lady said, where, how long are you going to give them and what is the penalty if they don't? I mean, I know there's a penalty in the contract. That's 11, 1300 a day. You know what I mean? So how long are we going to give them, right? And then because it's our tax dollars, we'd like to, and you saved us $6 million. You're our advocate. Like you're fighting for us and they're our dollars. We appreciate all the infrastructure changes. We do. We understand that it is old. And, you know, it's coming out of the township pocket and not mine. So but we still want some answers, you know, the way this is going on and the way it's been handled. It just hasn't been in the smoothest manner as well and/or the safest manner either.
So the, the question as it relates to the penalties, is that, is that the?
That's part of it, yeah. Like, when are we going to start penalizing them? So if, what was the original date this is supposed to be finished? October or August?
Yeah, October.
Okay. So right now, is Dolee aware of that? Because they haven't signed anything. I'm just, they haven't signed, so the original contract is still in effect. There's no amendment. So starting October 1st, which is a couple of weeks, if nothing's signed and nothing's done, we as a township should be penalizing them per day for violating that contract. Is that correct? And has that been mentioned to them?
Again, if we wanted to get into that, I, I.
I mean, I do want to get into it because that's part of our tax dollars and we could recruit some, right?
Yeah, it's a gray area because at this point, really, there is a negotiation ongoing between the contractor and the town and the owner of the project. And so I hedge my legal bets here today to suggest that most courts, I assume, not being a legal scholar, would not look favorably upon some sort of a legal battle between the contractor and the township if there is an ongoing negotiation as it relates specifically to the contract date. So if we were to go and say, and try to assess fees on them for not having it done by October and in their hand, there's this negotiation document that suggests we're trying to extend the date, I don't know that a court would, would, you know, again, look favorably upon liquidated damages at that point. So it's a, it's a hypothetical.
I understand, but so then we backpedal just a bit. And then whenever given the extension, if they offer, is there a timetable then? Okay, I appreciate your extension. If you do it, you have till a week or two to sign it or whatever, because we're, now we're going to go into the deadline. And if they don't do that, then is it back payable for the penalty? Because then I understand exactly where you're coming from. There is a negotiation, there's communication. So I understand.
Okay, let me ask you this, Brad. So the first Tuesday of October, is that the second?
Is it the, I may have said the first. I don't know if it's the first or the second. It's the first.
What's the first Tuesday? It's the first. Okay, so you're saying October 1st, we should have it in our hands to approve it?
We're going to have it in our hands before that, but I just say that the board will have it.
But are we going to be approving it on October the 1st?
That's my understanding and my intent is to have it on your agenda for October 1st.
Okay.
But staff will have it ahead of that time.
Right, but we're going to have it here to approve on October the 1st.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Just one final thing then, and I'm speaking also for 5726, I believe, Troy. Mailbox personal item is getting replaced. Is that also going to be, fall under those guidelines where everything's going to be done October 1st? Where I had a sinking issue and they got to replace my mailbox. They have my neighbor's mailbox laying on the ground on its side. It's a concrete brick monstrosity thing, but they had to take it, it's laying in his yard. So he asked, and I asked, along as well with anybody else that has that same issue, are those issues all going to be resolved this, by this deadline as well? Because he, nobody has received any communication. I luckily talked to the concrete guy. We actually became friends, like just, it's been whatever. So he stops by every Friday and we chat. And, because he filled me in on how we were told in the beginning that concrete progression for curbs and sidewalks were going to be as the job flows. And so Kenwood technically on our side could have been done, the whole neighborhood. After they did the inlets up the street from ours, within two days, they're doing all the concrete and curbs. And I was like, he was, his response was, it was easier to do those linear feet because it was a more complete job than going six feet here, four feet here, three feet there, where they had, they replaced everything for some reason up there, which is actually a newer part of the development. So that was some of the questions.
Did we give them a punch list, Brad, and on that punch list where the mailbox is on there?
Yes, I mean, I, I'd be lying if I say I knew because, I mean, the punch list was, you know, 20 pages long. I didn't look through to.
Okay, so maybe we need to look, because I know there is one laying on the ground out there.
Yeah, I, the, the, I assume the answer is yes. So I think, again, the briefing meeting that we had, we didn't get into if, you know, 5803's mailbox is going to be replaced, but I
But they're on the punch list.
Yes, that will, that's certainly noted in the punch list. But as to the question of if that will be among the work done by December 1st, I assume the answer is yes, but I
Okay, so we kind of need to find out about that too, so.
Is that something that I should email Eric Morgan on just to double check, just to confirm?
That would be something.
And should I include anybody else in those emails?
You can just send it to Eric. That'd be okay.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I see you have grass. I was there today.
Yeah, well, I didn't want to make it a personal thing, but yeah, I did find everything was done. But you're going to laugh. My yard, I have photos, is the only one that didn't come in properly. I had to go spend another $50 and seed and reseed my front yard. For some reason, the whole front yard, everybody in our block is beautiful. It looks great. But my yard, there's huge bald patches. I had to go buy a new grass seed and redo it all. So I don't know, the hydro seeder guy, whatever, he didn't fill his thing right. He blew out existing grass that I already planted that was like this tall and he blew it out, put big holes in. So I had to go and buy more grass seed and redo it. But I appreciate the effort. You guys did in two or three days, it was right back on and everything was looking kind of back to normal. So we appreciate that.
Good. All right. Well, thank you. Is there anybody else under public comment? Sir, your name and your address, please.
Steve Billitt, 5731 Kenwood Avenue. Basically, I'd just like to say that we're tired of being lied to. And when I say being lied to, my front yard was dug up. My sewer wasn't even supposed to be done. We went to Eric's office. Eric says, oh, no, you failed an air test. I said, you couldn't do an air test because you had to get in my house to do an air test on my system because I didn't have an outside access at the time. Oh, yeah, I have the paperwork. Well, 8:30 the next morning, he's at my house apologizing that, no, your house wasn't supposed to be done, but we'll make your yard as good, or if not better, than it was before. September 17th, my yard's still a dirt pile. Still a dirt pile.
Okay, have you contacted Eric?
Oh, yes. And all the little minions that sit out in their car there that supervise, they all see me coming and they start the car and drive away. I've been talking to a lot of people. We're just tired of being told the streets are going to be cleaned. They're not. There's stones, they come and they dump stones in on the sidewalk and they dump them in your yard. Doesn't matter. They dump piles of them along the street. They're all over the sidewalk and in the grass. Doesn't matter. Nobody cleans anything up. But everything's going to be taken care of. Don't worry about it. We're going to take care of it. I'm just tired of being lied to. If you had an issue with me and I lied to you, there'd be, there'd be consequences. But yet we're just supposed to sit back and, like I said, September 17th, my yard's still a dirt pile. And it shouldn't have even been dug up in the first place. So.
So when was the last time you were in touch with Eric?
Last time he was at Frank's house. When was that, Frank? Been to his office? Yeah, been to his office. They did come out and dump some dirt and spread it around, but there's still big dips in it.
They haven't reseeded it.
I was on vacation. I wasn't there to watch what they were doing, but I get home and it's, I did rake out part of it myself and seeded it, but I can't do the rest of it because there's still a big dip in it. Didn't have a dip in it before they started.
Can you get in touch with Bill, Brad, and see if he can get in touch with Eric?
Sure.
Okay, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else under public comment?
William Miller, 4311 Crestview. Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank Mr. Kissler at Elizabeth Village. You know, we're continuing to try to get sidewalks in. And there was a waiver given. But through some interesting, well, the architectural, the engineer, they're going to have a sidewalk coming out and around to get down to the pizza place, that section. And then from there, we're hoping with the Greenway Committee to continue down because there's no way for people to get to Devon Manor. There's no way for people to get over to the pool, no way for people to get to the churches. There's no way for people to get over to what's going to be a nice complex at Colonial Park Plaza. So people are going to have to ambulate and I'm just, it's a focus to look at sidewalks and these other methods of ambulation to be able to include those in these projects more as a normal thing than maybe asking not to do it. But that was something to come up with a plan after it was waived and he put it back in the plan. So that should be really commended. And a way by which other developers and contractors should most, I would hope, would take that initiative to follow in suit. The other thing I wanted to ask a favor on is when I cross, when I, on Lock Willow, when I cross over, I'm heading north, car wash is on the right, I'm going diagonal, I'm going to cut over to go out, you know, say to Karnes. That is the bumpiest ride I've ever seen. The road's got big furrows in it. When it rains, there are, there are foot and a half. foot and a half wide things of water. I have called PennDOT for about five years. The leadership there changes in District 8. And the latest, the other guys, they return your calls. Not now. And I just think, I can't be the only guy losing a cup of coffee or I'm taking my dump trailer with stuff over there. And I have to creep across and people are on their horns. It simply could be milled, I would think, I'm not a PennDOT engineer. But I think some phone calls, you know, now's the time to get it done before the snow flies, because that's kind of tough in the winter.
Do you call them, do you call them or email them?
Oh, I have his number and his name. And, you know, and I, and I know a relative of his.
Sometimes they're better, they're better with an email. They check their email more than they check their voicemail.
Oh, I have it. I do have that as well. Yes. I can give it to you. I'll get it to you.
Good.
The other thing about some walkways is as we move into the winter and with safe passage on these walkways, I have noticed that in two rental properties at North Houx and Devonshire, where the abandoned sign is, you know, you're coming, Turkey Hills on your left, those, they didn't shovel them one time last winter for those kids. And that's a busy area. And I don't know, you know, is it about enforcement? It's about just maybe putting something out in the sewer letters, the newsletters to say, you're reminded, especially the people, maybe Devon Manor has a group, but they're not.
They do have an HOA there, too, but that, so what I would suggest is you would email Nick Garrett. He's our codes. Because, again, we don't go out and look for that stuff. We're relying on the residents to get back to us. So, if you could get in touch with him, he would definitely go out.
I will. They're the only ones that didn't do it each time. It's, it's pretty bad. Because they're rentals. Who cares? And the other area of concern on these sidewalks is when, and it's, again, it's, this is owned by PennDOT. You might not know. When you go from, oh, over there, from Penswood Apartments down to Garden, you're heading north.
North.
Okay. That big embankment there, the landscapers for the apartments, they mow that embankment. The rest of it is PennDOT. It's never touched. In geology of a talus slope, all the rocks are coming down. The kids that are going to East should be able to walk on a safe sidewalk. I've talked to Nick about this. It's a PennDOT thing. They don't want to take ownership of it, and I, I think they need to be prodded a little bit. There are heaved sidewalks, which are now a trip hazard. And as you get down to Garden, the curb, they should have ADA cuts there. They're in disrepair. They've been hit, and they're just, it's just not right. Again, it's, it's, basically, to me, it's a school walkway. And in many cases, I always say, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. And all those people are the many, and PennDOT's the few on this one.
What do you think about getting in touch with the school district and see if they would write a letter to them?
I could do that. I could go to, I should go to a board meeting.
That's, that's what I would do. I would start with the school district because of the children walking on them and see, you know, we did that at the light at Locust Lane in Fairmont. They said, no, we sent a letter and they, they bid it. So, maybe just try with the school district and see maybe if they could write a letter. Maybe they would listen to them because it's the safety of the children that are going, you know, to East High and to East Middle.
That would be fair.
Yeah.
I just want you to know, because it's, most people don't know that both sides that had highway where the cut is, that's PennDOT property. That's their right of way. Finally able to give them to mow way out Devonshire, way out 39 at, at 39 and Route 22. They've been mowing that at least two, three times a year, finally. So, you know, these are battles you pick, you know. You can't, I can't pick every battle, and, you know, you can't fight every one of them. But those are seen by a lot of people, and there's a plan for that to make it even nicer. But for now, I just want you to know that they're not responding. And so, anything else we have with PennDOT?
Yeah. Start with the school district with that and email them. Like I said, I think they check their email more than they check the voicemail.
I will.
So. And that's why we, we plow a lot of PennDOT roads in Lower Paxton Township in the wintertime.
Well, I know you do colonial.
We do a lot.
I know you do colonial.
We do a lot.
But PennDOT just needs to take a little bit more ownership of some of their things because, you know, that mystery $5 fee in each registration every year. I, I asked for that list and I never got it. What are all those projects that you do with? That's, that's millions and millions of dollars throughout the state. Where does it go?
Do they have a board meeting? Maybe you should go under public comment at their board meeting.
Think that is my cue to sit down.
No, no, no. No, 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 no. You can speak as much as what you want. I'm just saying, you know? We're all dealing, dealing with PennDOT. Look at Locust Lane.
Prepping for, I know. I know that they wanted not to put sidewalks under some of those bridges unless somebody else maintained them. There's a lot of controversy with how they do their business. And I think people should know that, you know, that it's a massive amounts of money, massive amounts of money. And some of the little stuff is, ah, we're not going to do that. Well, it's their stuff. It's their sidewalk. They should be held legally accountable for, to maintain it in a safe, in a safe manner, which is township ordinance, but you're dealing with PennDOT. So, it's, you know, again, is it about, is that a hill you want to die on? Probably not. You know, you're not going to win that battle, usually.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing everything to our attention. Appreciate it. Anybody else under public comment? We're good to go? Okay. Chairman and board members' comments. Anybody have anything? Good. I just want to thank Deputy Chief Fire Chief Brett Graham. I saw today on 27 that he has a new application process out for volunteer firefighters. You can go on the website. It's, it's a one application for all three of our fire companies. So, thank you to Chief Graham for doing that. Okay. Managers' report. Mr. Gutshell.
Madam Chair, I have no official report this evening.
No old business, new business. Action to adopt Amendment Number 2 to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement for the preparation of an ICA with CRW. Mr. Gutshell.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before the board this evening is action on this resolution, which amends the standing intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the partners and CRW with regard to a, an underlying intergovernmental cooperation agreement. And this amendment this evening simply adds to the standing agreement, the appointment, and the cost share arrangement with regard to the partners' stake in a special counsel, Mike Karate, Siena Law. And it establishes, again, that fee structure based on proportional sewer flow among the partners. And so, as the coordinator with, with this project, Lower Paxton Township must take the lead and first pass this action. And then subsequently, each of the named partners will, will also take before their boards similar action. So, I'd be happy to help answer any questions on that that the board may have.
Any, any board questions?
How long has this partnership been in existence, Brad?
Formally, maybe the past year and a half. I'm looking to Sam. I, I, I think formally, maybe about a year and a half. But this has been an ongoing project with, with CRW and the, the partners for, long before I arrived in 2018. But as it relates to a formal intergovernmental cooperation agreement and really kind of establishing the formal written agreements and, and certainly cost share agreements, it's, it's been a more recent affair, probably within the past year and a half or so.
To, to add to that, the, the ICA agreement in front of us that's being revised today was first crafted in 2022. However, the agreement with our Partner Share Group for participation together as a group, along with CRW, dates back to the mid-'70s.
Okay. So, if I'm, I'm reading this correctly, it says in the borough of Stillton. I'm just surprised, they're, they're not in our area.
Yeah. This is a partnership agreement, basically, to negotiate with CRW future fees and cost share with, with their projects. Because as you know, a number of those municipalities, including Stillton and others, including Lower Paxton, you know, send our sewer-related materials to the city for, for ultimate treatment. So, you know, as part of that cost share arrangement, we and Stillton and others have this ICA.
So, that might answer my next question. So, the township that's west of us, excuse me, sorry, east of us, was that West Hanover? The reason that they're not a part of this is because they have their own?
I'm actually not quite sure how they treat their, I'm, I'm not sure what they do with their, with their sewage, but.
I mean, we have some sewer out there.
What's that?
Well, I said, we have some sewer out there that comes to us, Country Manor, Mobile Home Park.
Yeah, I mean, some of our infrastructure.
But as far as the others, yeah, I have no clue.
Yeah, I'm not sure. They, they may send theirs to Derry. They might send theirs to Derry. I'm not sure. I guess it just depends on the West Hanover map and, and what infrastructure is appropriate to send certain materials where. That's a long answer to a short question, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Amendment 2?
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have action to approve Resolution 2024-21, accepting the 2025 MMOs for the police and non-uniform employee pension plans. Mr. Miller?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. In relation to the motion here tonight, this is an annual motion that we make to approve our minimum municipal obligation. That is the minimum amount of pension contribution that will go into the pension funds next year. It's based on the count of individuals currently qualifying this year, as well as the projected wages for this year. So, this will be what we have to contribute into the pension funds by the end of next year. So, we have $691,441 is the non-uniformed amount, and $1,923,180 is the police amount. In total, that's down about $88,000 versus last year's combined MMOs. And again, that's based on our '24 period, and we reevaluate that in '25 at the same time next year.
Okay. Any questions? Good. Okay. I have a motion to approve Resolution 2024-21.
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action to adopt Resolution 2024-24, authorizing the submission of a multiple transportation fund grant application to the CFA for the Briersdale Road Improvement Project. Mr. Gutshell.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. This project has been brought in some fashion to the board in previous meetings with regard to a brief overview. However, before the board this evening is Resolution 2024-24, uh, 20, 2024-24, which essentially authorizes the submission of a grant to the Commonwealth Financing Authority, CFA, in the amount of $2,302,942. And this, this project would repair rapidly deteriorating roadways within the industrial park referred here to as Briersdale Road Project. And again, that, that would allow for the improvement of various roadways within that industrial park, which borders and actually at points goes into Susquehanna Township. So, we do have cooperation from Susquehanna Township to complete this project. And we hope at this time that the CFA looks upon this project favorably and allows us to, to get those deteriorating roads replaced and have a subbase installed to it such that the heavy truck traffic that exists out there will not affect the road in as rapid a time as has been the case. So.
Is Susquehanna doing their own grant, or how, how are they doing that, that they're part of that?
Now, the, Lower Paxton is, is taking the lead on this project, and this would kind of account for, it should account for that, that entire project. So.
Okay. So, even though they have roads back there, we're going to be taking care of everything?
At this time, this, this grant application actually is a 100% CFA-funded venture. So, we hope that if, if approved as such by CFA, the, Lower Paxton would not be liable for any sort of local match anyway. So, it would all be essentially a state-funded.
And they're, Susquehanna's aware that we're doing this?
Correct. Yes. They, they did provide to us a letter of support.
Okay. Okay.
And if the grant's not approved?
If the grant's not approved, unfortunately, the, the condos of Briersdale Industrial Park are going to have to go another few years of, of discomfort because it's not, this is an odd area of the township where it doesn't really have any residential component to it. It's only industrial. And, you know, frankly, as it relates to the township-wide transportation network, this is, is rather low on the priority list. So, if this doesn't fund it, we have no plan, contemplate it for alternative funding.
At the expense. Okay. Any other questions? Motion to adopt Resolution 2024-24. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Action to award Township and Authority Property and Casualty Insurance coverages. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll give a brief introduction here, and then I'll turn it over to our resident expert that is here with us. Andy Enders is here representing Enders Insurance, our broker of record in relation to policies. This can be a stressful effort just because it's always a crunch to get all the details together and the agencies working with each other and, you know, at, at times fighting out the best premiums we can coordinate. It'd be nice to do this earlier, you know, in previous months, but there's some extreme hesitancy for them to quote on products until we're right up on the point where we'll do one, our renewal. The packages before you will be effective October 1st and then run through that fiscal year period to the end of September. Given you a brief memo on that, once we had the final numbers come back through, and Andy can shed a little bit more light on that, but in relation to the policy, it is proposing a significant increase in the cost to the tune of about $54,908, or about 25% increase overall. There are a couple of points to note specific to that. The first being of which, in relation to the selective premiums, which selective insurance would be the recommended providers for property coverage and inland marine, so it's a small crime package. That policy actually decreased in total by about $3,000. When you switch over to the other policies, which are general liability, automotive, legal liability for police and public officials, Andy will share a little bit of the market concerns when it comes to police officer and the public, and, and public officials and staff liability functions. But on the automobile side, we had an increase in the automobile quote of just over $10,000. However, this was the first year that we added all nine piece of the township-owned apparatus onto our plan. Those items themselves on the other respective plans totaled just under $39,000. So, overall, a pretty decent decrease in the automotive standpoint. So, that takes a chunk of that $52,000 away, that $20,000 plus in savings that we have. But at this point, I'll go ahead and ask Andy if he would come to the podium, and he can give us a little bit more of an update in relation to the market concerns on some of these other policies that were a bit out of our control, and we don't have much claim exposure either.
Thank you, Sam. I'm going to go off script for a second. Madam Supervisor Thompson, West Hanover Township actually has a wastewater treatment facility that treats its wastewater for sewage. So, that's where theirs goes. And I know that because, sorry, I'm on the board at Capital Region Water, too. So, I said I'd take, way off script. Thank you for your partnership on the ICA. We do appreciate it. Now, I'm going to take off my Capital Region Water hat and say thank you for the opportunity to serve the township as the broker of record on your property and casualty insurance program. First and foremost, we are in the midst of an extremely hard market, the likes of which I have never seen in my career. And although I'm relatively young, I've been doing this for about 20 years. This is a very challenging time. I will point out that Selective's response on your property coverage was among the best I have seen from a municipal standpoint with that, that slight reduction in overall premium, while also demonstrating an increase to the overall property limits of the township year over year. Our team at Enders worked very diligently up until the last minute, and really, I was sending emails with regard to the township while I was sitting in the back here. But specifically, as of Friday into Monday, our team worked very closely with our underwriting team at Selective to impress upon them that this is a new relationship for us. And quite frankly, it's still a new relationship between Selective and the township, having just moved over within the last 24 months. As such, because of your favorable loss history on the property overall, it warranted a decrease. As I mentioned to, to Mr. Miller, there's only so many levers that an underwriter can pull, but we pulled every single one that we could to reduce that rate on the property coverage. As it pertains to, I'll say, the core package and program of what the township does on a day-to-day basis, it's extraordinarily. extraordinarily challenging. Specifically, as I've witnessed across the industry for public officials' errors and omissions, or professional liability, that being the coverage that really protects each of you in the decisions that you're making on behalf of the taxpayers, and really, everybody that is operating within the context of Lower Paxton Township, public officials' errors and omissions has just faced incredible burdens across the country. It is not that Lower Paxton Township has done something specifically wrong, although I will say that as this is a new relationship between Enders and Lower Paxton Township, we're going to do everything we can to provide additional tools and resources to you to help continue to make good decisions to protect the township, but also hopefully either keep premiums in check or reduce it in the future. Some of those things that we'll be doing, I think we've already been responsive to Mr. Miller in a lot of ways to provide very specific language to guide him in decision-making process, which will ultimately help us to tell a better story moving forward. Public officials ENO across the country averaging about an eight to nine percent increase, we're seeing that here. When you add on to that continued increases to the law enforcement liability, that is something that is completely responding to the nature of the environment of what's happening within many communities across the country as it relates to interactions between police departments and their citizenry. It's a challenging environment for that coverage, and what we're seeing is a pullback and reduction in many policy forms, where coverage is actually being reduced in addition to premiums going up. It's been like this for the better part of 24 months, and we anticipate some leveling off as we move into 2025. As a mechanism really to help reduce and limit the exposure to the township, what we did with Mr. Miller was a flat fee was negotiated. And one of the things that I will point out to the board is that if we are able to obtain additional relief throughout the course of the policy period, or if we see other opportunities for improvements and it reduces the work that we're doing, we will reduce our fee in conjunction with that as we move into subsequent policy periods and policy terms. Just an overall challenging environment, but as Mr. Miller already highlighted for you, I think our one most significant victory was on the commercial auto, which has been actually a hot button in terms of loss history for the township unfortunately over the last couple of years. But even with that, and the addition of your apparatus to a township-controlled policy, which is going to be good in many ways, and I'll stress this on the risk management side of how you're handling the use of that equipment and apparatus, and I know Mr. Minsker and his team, they do know what they're doing, but it never helps, it never hurts to have a little bit of guidance from a singular point of contact. I believe that that long-term will continue to carry over year over year. That was a major win, and we were very pleased with our carrier partner at Trident. Even with a change in their issuing company this year, from Argonaut, which was part of the Argo Insurance Group, to Ascot, we really were able to take advantage of that change, and it benefited the township at length. That's my overview. I welcome any questions from you, Mr. Miller, or from the supervisors.
Does anybody? Go ahead.
So what exactly did you mean when you said you're looking to obtain additional relief? What does that phrase mean?
Our work is really in our knowledge of the industry and what products are available and what services are available to different clients. I've stressed this with Mr. Miller a number of times, and I know he's in complete agreement, and that is the insurance policy and the program should be a living, breathing document, meaning that it shouldn't just be looked at one time per year. We'll continue to work with our underwriters throughout the course of the year, so if there is opportunity to make changes to the policy which would reduce the premium, we're certainly going to do that. And we've also identified areas where we may make recommendations to Mr. Miller to come back to the board to actually increase certain coverage. So it can go both ways, but our primary responsibility is to make sure that we're identifying those places where we can reduce premium.
So is there something that you would recommend that, say, and I'm not trying to pick on any department, say, the police department could do differently or do better in order to shift our premiums away from a 25% increase?
Well, I think that's a great question. I'm glad you're dialed in on that. This is going to be a process that will probably take 18 to 24 months for our team to do its work. Insurance is slow to respond, and if you look at what has happened kind of culturally throughout communities across this country, again, with engagement between police officers and citizenry and the people that are unfortunately making bad decisions and causing issues, and then really, the stresses upon our friends at the police department, it's going to take a while. We do have some strategies that we will be recommending. It's too early in our process, as we have really just gotten to know the township on a more intimate basis for its insurance program, although I'm almost a lifelong resident of the township. But the specific policies and procedures, those are things we have to continue to work with Mr. Gottschall and Mr. Miller with, along with the police department, in order to make specific recommendations that could ultimately reduce those premiums.
Are we being penalized because of decisions that other states, that other municipalities in other states have made, and now we're seeing a 25% increase because we've been well behaved here?
Absolutely. And I don't know if you know the Supervisor Thompson, I'm actually a former deputy district attorney in Dauphin County. So I worked very closely with the police department here in Lower Paxton, going back a number of years, have a number of friends still on the force and respect the heck out of them. Insurance is a pooled product, and unfortunately, the behaviors of your brethren across, not necessarily across the country, although this program that you are in does draw from municipalities across the country, they do look at very specific geographic regions. There's no question. What's happening across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is influencing your pricing because it is a pooled product.
And I'll add to that, Andy, as well. We certainly saw that with the public officials and the employee practices, and employment practices aside, where I see no historical claim history, and you could see it near-doubled. I mean, again, we've got clean records, but that's clearly showing the industry having an impact on, you know, how that has been dictating insurance companies go out, because again, they have to consider others' risks as far as what risk they want to take, because today is different than tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, great. Anybody else? Mr. Enders, ask any more questions to him?
I would just say to kind of bring the discussion back for the board, the one piece that is still missing from here is our pollution policy. That's a very small policy. It's just for underground storage tanks at public works for the gasoline and diesel. Last year's policy amount was about $2,000. We expected it to come back very similar to that, so I'll have essentially a retroactive action for you on October 1st. We will execute that document in the interim, and then have you retroactively approve our actions then. But I did want to caveat that, that one piece of this, that we really only have one party that's willing to take that risk on, is we're just waiting on those finalized numbers.
Mr. Miller, I'll add and comment on that. The proposed changes to your storage tanks influenced the market's response to that very exposure, and we had one carrier that was very interested and might have been able to get the pricing a bit better in line, but proposed things happening in the future with regard to those tanks, underwriter at Chubb actually ended up declining outright.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
If I can add, and I don't know how Mr. Minsker feels about this, but I'm just glad that the township is now insuring all nine pieces of our apparatus. That makes me very happy. And the other thing, it sounds like we need to have our staff drive a little bit more safely. Yeah. If you could relay that to the staff, please, when they're in our township cards, I would appreciate that.
We look forward to the safety committee meeting this week.
We're at the safety committee.
Chair Lindsay.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. Do I have action to approve or award the Township and the Authority Property and Casualty Insurance Coverages to Enders Insurance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Subdivision and land development. We have action to approve the preliminary final subdivision plan for 6545 Parkway East. Are you handling this, Mrs. Erby?
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right. The preliminary final subdivision plan for 6545 Parkway East proposes to subdivide Lot 35005008 into three separate single-family residential lots. Lot 35005008 has a total area of 18.39 acres and currently has two single-family residential dwellings on the lot, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Lot 1 will have a total area of 4.05 acres. Lot 2 will have a total area of 3.02 acres and will consist of an existing family home. Lot 3, which is 35005008, which is the residual tract, will have a total area of 11.33 acres and will consist of an existing single-family home. The site is in the agricultural residential zoning district and will be served by private sewer and private water. The plan was approved at the September 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, and this plan comes before the board tonight with only three waiver requests, which staff supports, one deferral which staff supports, five administrative comments, and two general comments to satisfy prior to recording. And John Murphy from Alpha Engineering is here this evening if the board has questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm sure Mr. Miller wants to know if there's going to be sidewalks.
So does Mrs. Thompson.
Well, not back on Parkway East. There ain't no sidewalks back there, trust me. Yeah. Yeah, in the future.
But Mr. Miller, why are you saying in the future? Why not now as the development is going in?
Okay, you're going to have to come up because they're on TV. If you haven't been to the property, it's rural.
It's behind Stoffers, right?
No.
No, it's up Parkway East.
This is Parkway East. Stoffers is on Parkway West.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is.
It's rural up there.
This is way out there.
There's not going to be no sidewalks there.
It's safe to walk along the roads there. I don't try to, again, you know, walkways are good. They're macadam. They're more flexible. Sidewalks, when you're near places that have a lot of heavy traffic, a lot of ADA compliance, people with walkers, wheelchairs, and so on, you need that for them in a more densely populated area. But out on Parkway East, I mean, that's pretty historical out there. There's a railroad bed.
You're going up the mountain.
Huh?
I said you're going up the mountain.
Yeah, there's a railroad bed near. There's all kinds of stuff out there that the Historical Commission has a lot of videotaped documentaries on, which is quite revealing. But not out there. I mean, that's pretty much, I mean, I'd probably be asking, but, you know, and I can say in retrospect in all this, as you look at all these projects that the township does, when you look at Conway, and you're out there where they're putting the new park and so on, you have a big swell where there could have been a sidewalk leading up, which would go down to the new park. When they did the roads, they didn't leave it right away, so you could have used the interior sidewalks, as Elizabeth Village is going to use to their advantage. So it seems as if you do a project, and you pay, you redesign, you dig, you pay again, you move dirt, you move a sword. It's the same thing with the new sheets. There's a temporary waiver for a sidewalk, if you're curious, at that new sheets. They don't have to do it right now. They'd have to dig up electrical, fiber, there's all kinds of things there. There's a crosswalk there, but there's a little button on the south side where if you turn around to press it, you probably lose your backside. That's got to be fixed. And why make the sheets representative agreed directly on TV that they will fix that later? But you have to work with PennDOT. It's a big project, so why dig it up and do it now? I'm looking, not me, I mean, the committee, looking at areas that need things done, and looking to the future to get rid of traffic choke points, and especially on Route 22, there's a lot of areas that don't have, you know, it's a safe passage, I guess, but you can always try to do better, is what I'm saying.
Sorry, Mr. Miller. I didn't mean to get you all riled up again.
Oh, no. I mean, I'm pretty passionate about the sidewalks. It's a story, but as I was walking, as I was driving one day by the Colonial Park Plaza, make this very brief, I call it the toe path, like where a deer or something would walk, that little walkway on the west side. And I came upon some poor guy who got hit. I mean, he got tagged. The groceries were over the whole way up to the building. And I started thinking, you know, all they got to do is extend that culvert 15 feet, throw some dirt on top. The same thing there by Devonshire and Crumbs Mill. Extend it over. And where's this dirt come from? That's a whole nother discussion you'll hear about, but PennDOT has a jillion tons. Somebody I know in this room has, you know, a jillion tons of it. And we could stockpile it and move it, and it wouldn't cost us anything. Well, it would cost us something to move it. But the focus of this is when perhaps if you go to the effect of a municipal planner who attends every single committee meeting and has a handle on, he's like, oh, we forgot the sidewalk at Conway. Oh, we're not going to do sheets because we need to improve that intersection. And they're aware of what's happening in each of the minutes of all the committees. And then I think we, is it more taxes? Maybe. But I think it's a vital piece. We're larger than Harrisburg in population.
Can we get, I'm sorry to cut you short.
I'm sorry.
Okay, but we need to get back to the final subdivision plan for this.
Correct. I'm sorry, but I wanted to answer your question.
It's okay. No problem.
Add that to it. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Mrs. Erby, I just had a question. You were okay with it as long as they didn't build on the third lot. Did I read that? That there would be no building on the third lot?
No, there is, there is building on the third lot.
Okay. Can you give your name and address, please?
John Murphy with Alpha Consulting Engineers, 115 Limekiln Road, New Cumberland. So what Mrs. Erby was saying, there are actually two homes currently
Right.
on the property.
Right.
And there will be, there will be two lots that will be built on and one lot that already has the homes on it. So it's a three, just a simple three-lot subdivision.
The third lot is going to be built on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I must have read that wrong.
Yep. All three lots will have homes on at the end of the project.
Okay. And I was out there, and I saw the two houses, so, okay. All right. I am sorry. I read that wrong. Okay.
Thank you.
We're good. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the preliminary final subdivision plan for 6545 Parkway East, Plan 24-11? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will be relinquishing the chair for the next agenda item, and Vice Chair Supervisor Zumas will be taking care of that.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. So we need to take action to approve the preliminary final subdivision plan for Cedar Press Station, Plan Number 22-12. Mrs. Erby?
Yes, this is a Cedar Press Station plan. It'll consist of 27.71 acres and 85 lots to be developed in accordance with the plan. The plan proposes 81 dwelling units and four open space lots. The dwelling units will comprise of 73 single-family detached dwellings and eight townhouses. Additionally, the land that is proposed for open space will have a total area of 12.52 acres and will consist of three parks and one open space lot. The open space lot will house a stormwater basin and an interloping trail that will extend along Nice Road. The site is in the R1 Low Density Residential District with a TND traditional neighborhood development overlay and will be served by public water and sewer. The plan and architectural requirements were approved at the September 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. There are 13 waiver requests for this plan, but the number of requests are due to the nature of the requirements of the TND development not being able to be developed with the current SADO ordinance requirements. There are three administrative comments and four general comments to be satisfied prior to recording, and I just want to make the board aware that this plan will need to be approved, and the architectural requirements will need to be reviewed, so whether, or approved, so whether you do that in one clear movement, or whether you do them in two separate motions, you need to approve the architectural requirements and the plan. And Tim Malatas here, if the board has any questions.
Mrs. Erby, you said there are 13 waiver requests?
Yes.
What are they?
Nope. You want all 13?
I do, ma'am.
Okay. The applicant seeks a waiver of the requirement for all streets associated with the plan in terms of right-of-way and cartway widths. The street standards, as adopted by the Lower Paxton Township, does not account for this type of traditional neighborhood development. Minimum street right-of-way and cartway neighborhood development. Minimum street right-of-way and cartway widths for a minor street are 50 feet and 32 feet respectively, and for a collector's street, 60 feet and 36 feet. The applicant requests waivers for these requirements for all streets associated with the plan in terms of right-of-way and cartway widths. Number two is the applicant is seeking a waiver of the requirement that the minimum horizontal radius is 150 for a minor street. Three is the applicant is seeking a waiver of the requirement that the clear-site triangles at intersection 75 feet for minor roads waiver requested is relative to a single townhouse unit. Townhouse Unit H1 encroaches slightly into the 75-foot clear-site triangle at Pear Ridge Drive and Bartlett Lane intersection. The applicant requests a waiver from this requirement because the large clear-site triangles do not support the intent of the TND development to keep houses closer to the roadways to create the neighborhood atmosphere. In addition, Bartlett Lane is merely intended for access to the rear-loaded driveways for the townhouse's fronting on Cider Press Road, and the proposed minor encroachment into the clear-site triangle does not affect the site distance sightlines. Number four, the applicant is seeking...
May I ask, Madam Chair, can, if, can you just summarize what they're seeking? And then if Ms. Thompson has a question, she can ask you, so we don't have to go through all these.
Because they were in our packet.
I found it.
Everything's in our packet.
Okay.
So if you see anything that you want to ask about, just so we don't keep everybody. But it is, it's more than usual.
It is more than usual because the TND is an overlay district, and when the SADO ordinance was adopted, it didn't take into, it didn't take into account the TND requirements, which were very specific and only utilized in a very few developments within the township.
So it has to be done in this fashion?
It has to be done in this respect, yes.
Okay.
The TND criteria is zoning criteria that you adopted in your zoning ordinance.
Right.
Subdivision and land development standalone, and it didn't actually account for this. So, you know, so quite frankly, like, the Cider Press Road improvements were actually making the road wider than what they would ask for. So that's a 38-foot wide road instead of 32. And then the internal roadways are designed to maintain a 28-foot width with one side of the road designated for on-street parking, and then the other is for the travel lanes. So the intent of the TND, which is meant to mirror some of the older communities from back in the 40s where everything was tighter, and the geometry of the roadways are intended to keep people going slower on the roadways instead of wider roads that, which promote speeds. Sorry to interject. I just thought of throwing that.
I appreciate it. And we're the ones who did the TND. We want this. We want this to work. Yeah.
That's why they were written in a way that it's, you know, and I'm happy to get into every level of detail you'd like on each individual one, if you'd like, but it's, it's pretty straightforward.
And you need two motions? Do we, is that what I'm hearing?
You just need to adopt the architectural requirements and the plan itself, as you normally do.
So there's the plan, there's the waivers, and then there was an architectural packet that was also reviewed and recommended for approval by the planning commission. And I believe the way that it's structured, they all require separate action, if that's correct.
But we can do it under one motion.
You could do it under one motion.
Yes.
Just, just note each one of those components. Yeah.
Okay. Board members have any further questions? Members of the public, any questions? I'm going to recommend we do one motion, considering that we're going to adopt the requirements for...
The architectural requirements and the preliminary plan itself, is that correct? And I'll, I'll move that we approve the preliminary plan, final subdivision plan for Cider Press Station, including the architectural requirements and the preliminary plan itself.
We have a motion. We have a second?
I second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please? Shall we?
Mr. Navarro?
Aye.
Mr. Zumas?
Aye.
Mrs. Lindsey?
I'll be abstaining for personal reasons.
Mr. Judd?
Aye.
Miss...
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the improvement guarantees, and I'm waiting for them to come up.
No.
Elizabeth Village.
No, no.
Oh, Elizabeth.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm one step ahead. Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry, Mr. Kessler.
Yeah, you sat here all this time. We thought you skipped over.
Okay. Let me just look here.
Well, Mr. Kessler, while Ms. Lindsey's getting ready.
I got it.
Oh, you got it?
I got it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'm afraid to hit this because it's been off for so long that it might go somewhere else. The action to approve the revised final subdivision and land development plan for Elizabeth Village Plan 24-09.
Yes, the plan for Elizabeth Village Phase One proposes to consolidate four existing tracts located off of Colonial Road into one parcel totaling 48.013 acres to allow for a 235-town-home-unit age-restricted community to be developed in accordance with the plan. Phase One consists of 17 acres to be developed that will consist of 114 townhome units within 18 buildings, along with the construction of five private streets. The site is currently zoned IN, institutional, which allows for the RRD, Residential Retirement Development option, that generally accommodates residents aged 55 and older. Private streets are proposed for the development, and the community will be served by public water and public sewer. There are three waiver requests that were approved by the Board of Supervisors as part of final Phase One application, and the board moved to approve the waiver request at the July 21st, 2023 meeting. This plan was approved at the September 4th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission requested at that meeting that the applicant provide potential modifications to the onsite walking path along Colonial Road for the board's review and comment. The applicant has provided the modifications, which you received in your packet, and the applicant is here to address any concerns with that proposed walking path.
Any questions, board? I would just like to say thank you for putting in the sidewalks.
You're, you're welcome. It was difficult because we originally had to explain why there were flat spots, forgetting we had to add a turning lane, deceleration lanes. So we were shifting traffic, but we did work it out. I don't know if we can...
Can you bring it up, Brad?
It doesn't include the actual plan, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
But we did work it out to satisfactory.
And Mr. Miller thanks you, which doesn't require you to go to the podium or anything.
Miller makes me put more sidewalks than I'd like to.
Well, and I think too, the little strip mall, there with all the shops, I'm sure that they're grateful that you're going to do that so people can leave Elizabeth Village.
It was a wise connection.
Yeah.
We just had a mechanical issue problem initially. It looks like there's a lot of room, but there was actually some lane shifting, deceleration lanes. So by the time you were done, there was nothing left. But we did work it out.
Yeah, everybody keeps asking, you know, on the right-hand side, you know, because they're digging there by the cemetery, and is that because they're widening it to put in the turning lane to go in there?
Into the cemetery?
No, they're not digging in the cemetery, by the cemetery.
Well, we're going, we're digging down to upgrade the pump station. That's all sewer work.
Okay, so that's what that's for.
We're, right, we're boring underneath, so there's pits, and then we're going down and we're upgrading the pump station.
What did you say? No, no, no. It's by the cemetery. They're not in the cemetery.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not digging anybody out.
No, it is by the cemetery. I said by the cemetery, so, okay. Board, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
For Mr. Kessler? No? Anybody from the audience? Any questions? Okay.
I'd just like to add my thank you to Supervisor Lindsey for the sidewalk. I'm very much interested in the connectivity issue here in the township.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the revised final subdivision and land development plan for Elizabeth Village Plan 24-09?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. I have one question for the board. I don't mean to mess up. Who is the township attorney now? There's some loose ends we need for this project, but there's no attorney around.
Sir, we do have an attorney. We have, legal services are being provided by the interim solicitor, which is Eckert Siemens. So if you have a question...
Who?
You could shoot, shoot them over to me, and I'll, I'll make sure that they get to the appropriate individual.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? You're good, Eric?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, now we will do the improvement guarantees. We have Autumn Oaks, Phase Three, Patton Road, Forest Hills Commons, and Huntley, Phase Two through Five. Do I have any questions about the improvement guarantees? Anybody from the audience? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have the payment bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority. Do I have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any announcements?
I have several.
Oh, okay.
So one of the areas of concern that I've had since I joined the board was how we go about meeting in relationship to the Sunshine Act. So what I would like to propose publicly is that we bring in a attorney to talk to us as a board here in this boardroom so that the public is invited, because one, I've, I've heard that we do a lot of things outside of the view of the public. So I would like the public to understand, have an explanation as to how the Sunshine Act is supposed to work, so that they know that we are being as transparent as we can possibly be. That's my first announcement. My second announcement is Fall Fest is on October 5th, and we've got a park in, we're holding it at George Park, and we have a park there that needs some upgrade. So I would like to propose that during that Fall Fest, we put a, a box out to raise funds from the people who are going to be participating in that Fall Fest, so that the public can assist and aid in funding the improvement of that particular playground area. What's it called?
Possibility Place.
Possibility Place. The third announcement that I would like to make is on this Friday, which I believe is the 20th, at Greater Zion Missionary Baptist Church on Progress Avenue, Representative Fleming is holding Senior Day. There's supposed to be 50 vendors there for the seniors to come and be informed of different pieces of information that relate to any of the concerns that they may have.
And that is from 10 to 1:00, and that is rain or shine. If it's okay, they'll be setting up outside. If not, they will be inside the church for that day. Okay. Is anybody else?
No, just that Fall Fest is in conjunction with the Rotary Club. It's going to be using that facility the same day.
The park?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. The township is partnering with the Rotary Club that day, so.
So how do you put a box for Rotary Club and a box for, for the residents that are attending Fall Fest and be able to differentiate between the two?
Label your boxes.
Well, we can talk.
Who's going to get the approval from Rotary Club? You just going to stick a box out there and just say, there's a box out there?
No, we're not going to just stick a box out there. We're going to boxes, because the box will have to be manned, so we'd have somebody there who would provide an explanation for what's going on.
Did we intend, Brad, that Possibility Place, I know we had our budget meeting with Parks and Rec. Were we intending to do some fundraising or soliciting funds without it? We assumed that was going to be, it was built with volunteers, or did we conclude that this is, it's, it's grown to be a much bigger multimillion-dollar thing where we can't, because I was one of the people with the drills that somehow didn't put a hole in my hand, but we put that together with a bunch of volunteers. But I did, I don't, I can't recall if we intended to solicit donations, volunteer work this time around.
Yeah. Mr. Zumas, Mr. Judd, good question. The, the township does intend and hope for public engagement, whether that be physical, whether it be financial, or otherwise, on two projects. One, George Park, specifically Possibility Place, and two, the, the Dog Park. They are the two projects moving forward within the park system that we really hope to have public financial input on.
Financial input as far as donations?
Donations, yes.
Okay, so do we have time to have some, a sign or something made up?
Sure, yeah. That, that should be no problem. I, I, to Mr. Zumas' point, I, we'll certainly work out the logistics, but...
Okay, we'll work it.
Yeah, because it's our Fall Fest. It's just that Rotary is, you know, collaborating with us.
Sure.
And I hope, I mean, I was there too with a hammer. I hope that we do have some community involvement. It was fun. It, you knew you were giving back to the community, and it was a good way to meet new people also.
If I recall, like, we've got to level the land, like, we have to.
Yeah.
We, this is going to be a much...
It's going to have to be totally tore.
Much bigger.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, at this point, we're not ready to just throw like a message up on our website saying, here, donate your money. But we hope to really kind of put together like a public package that will solicit public input, feedback, financial support.
And even if it's just coming soon, check, check the website. I mean, we don't want to get anything wrong, obviously.
I think I remember buying bricks.
We did. No, we bought the slats and the fence. That's what we did. We bought, and then your name was, you know, we purchased it, and your name was, your name was on it, so. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.